Let the record show that everyone is present. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Under the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state under God, one indivisible.
Remain standing for the implication, Pastor.
Let us pray. Heavenly Father, please be with us and guide us as this council meets that we will do decisions that are financially sound and will do things that protect the -- all of the people that live here in Castleville and do the things to protect the government as well. Lord, it's spring break. We pray for all of the students that are on break, the families that are with them. Give them safe travels, give them safe recreation. Lord, we also pray that some of those on break will come and visit the Castleville community. Lord, we pray for all of those that serve as first responders, policemen, firefighters, and the military. Lord, it's a couple of weeks from Easter. We know that. We know that our job is to love our neighbors as ourselves, and we strive to do that in all we do. Lord, we thank you, we bless you, we worship you. In Jesus' name, amen.
Thank you, Pastor. Going on to item number five, the consent agenda. Anyone have any changes?
Question?
Yes, ma'am.
The airport one?
Okay.
Page -- I don't know what page, I didn't remember the page number. The first one, 13 January.
Out of E.
Sorry.
I'm sorry, out of F.
13 January, the minutes. I just had a question on it, that's all. Will this be brought to us, to the council, about the reasons for not wanting to modify the lease for a commercial business? That'll be brought later to the council?
Yes, a commercial lease is brought to council for consideration.
I understand, and this, it said D, the city, is that us? Is that council? I don't remember ever hearing it.
Yes, we brought that forward. We brought it to council a couple of weeks, a couple of council meetings ago.
I missed it.
Well, it was an executive session.
So, it was that they didn't want to -- I can talk about this. We didn't want to modify the farmer's lease.
That's correct.
Okay. That's not exactly what I remember, but I had another one. Replacing their rocking chairs, is that out of our budget or their budget?
No. It would either be something that they would do a fundraiser for or get people to donate money toward, but we don't have that in the budget.
Okay. And then, the next one was the minutes for 10 February. Just want to bring this up. We talked about the safety at the airport, and it seems like being an uncontrolled airport, there might be a little bit of concern over following traffic patterns for uncontrolled traffic that are runners at the airport. I think that might interfere with the training. That might be something that the Airport Board wants to think about. And did Ms. Mora tell the league people that the parking or the entrance to the airport has been closed and there's an alternative way to get in? That's A.
This is for crack ceiling on the runway itself. Yes, we had a note sent out, and they were -- if you read the last weekly memo that I sent out, they were notified, the tenants were all notified, that the crack, that there was crack ceiling going on for Monday and Tuesday and that the runway would be closed.
Okay, so that's good, and they know that?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. And then, as far as this Fortner skydiving proposal, we'll get more on that as soon as...
Yes, that was an executive session.
And the -- I didn't know about this, I don't understand about the vision statement, the long-range plan, and Mr. Galvez with the proposal for the amount of money. Would that be our money, or is that something that will come to us again?
That would come forward to the council also in the future.
All right. Okay.
Thank you.
Can I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
I'll take two.
Eric Cherry with the motion, Vic Ortiz with the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item number six, citizens' comments. Does anyone wish to speak before council this evening? No takers?
Yeah.
Okay, we'll close citizens' comments. Moving on to item number seven, discussion of appropriate action on renewal of employee health insurance with Texas Municipal League Multi-State. Mary Jo?
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. Item number seven deals with medical coverage and COBRA continuation of coverage administrative agreement. For the last eight years, the City of Castleville has provided full-time employees with healthcare coverage through the Texas Municipal League Multi-State Intergovernmental Employee Benefits Pool, often referred to as TML-IEBP. This year, the TML has proposed 15% increase in order to maintain our current level of benefits. The City looked at a number of options and has recommended that we do some planned design changes in order to reduce the proposed increase in premiums. What we've presented this evening is a 9.75% increase, which means that individual deductibles at $1,000 would increase to $1,250. The in-network co-pay for a visit to the doctor would increase from $30 to $40. If the 9.75% increase is approved, it means that for employee coverage, it would be $51.61 more per month per employee. The City pays 100% for that coverage. For a spouse, the employee pays 100% of that coverage, and it means the employee would pay 78.04 cents per month for their spouse. For children, it would be $39.23 per month. An employee with family coverage would pay $118.70 per month. While the 9.75% increase is high, you'll note, I want to note that over the last nine years, the average rate increase would be 3.53%, which is actually unheard of. Out of the last four years, or four of the last nine years, the City of Castleville had 0% increase in its premiums, and then, there were two years where there was a 3% increase, which is extremely low. The purpose of this being presented is for your approval to provide full-time employees with healthcare coverage and to comply with the Affordable Care Act as well as the COBRA laws. Are there any questions?
Eric?
Oh, yeah. You had, you just stated that the employee would pay $78.04 for spouse coverage, and essentially, that's not correct. It's $878.34 per month for spousal coverage.
It was the increase...
Of 78.04.
Yes, sir.
Okay, so I just want to be accurate.
That is correct.
An increase of 78.04, which, I mean, if you look at spouse coverage and you look at children's coverage, my comment would be, it's tough to play catch-up, isn't it? Those years that we had no increases, we're getting tagged with 15% on the front end, and now, we're at 9.7 if we work it down and up to deductibles, right? So, if you look at in-network co-pay, now, that's in-network. Who is the network? Which network is it?
United Healthcare, which is extremely large here in the San Antonio area.
Yeah, I'm pretty familiar with them. Bill them millions. The proposed per visit is a $10 increase, which is like 30% over the prior year, okay? For an employee, per visit is 30%. See, this is where the, if you're in the insurance game, you get into the smoke and mirrors of, well, it's only a 4% increase, but realistically, what you're going to be paying out of pocket, okay? For, when you think about the person who's actually using this, they're actually paying a 30% increase on the visit. It's going up $10, and before it was 30, and now it's 40. That's 30%.
Yes, sir.
You're looking at a 30% increase per visit, okay? Plus, you're looking at bumping up their deductible by what?
$250.
Oh, and $250 is what percentage of 1,000? 25%.
Not all employees reach the deductible, sir.
Well, I'm sure. I'm sure in some cases, depending on, I'm sure they can get different plans, correct?
No, sir.
There's only one plan.
That's correct.
They only have an option. This is, they get one plan. Have we compared this to other plans that are out there in the marketplace? And if we have, how come the comparisons were not put into the packet?
We did not go out for bid from other places this year.
Interesting. Okay, that's all I've got. But, yeah, I mean, you're upping the individual deductible 25%, and your in-network co-pay is going up 30%.
We did ask for an option to do, maintain the 30% co-, or $30 co-pay. The rate increase would have been 12.97% increase.
Sure. Yeah, that's what I'm saying. We're playing catch-up, okay? You know, we got, it was nice, we had months, years that we didn't have increases, or 3% and 4% increases, when other businesses, we're seeing 20% increases, 15% increases, but now, we're getting into that catch-up curve, okay? We're going to see, and I, my prediction is, every year from this going forward, we're going to have to catch up. Because it's United. I mean, you're in United's, you know, marketplace, and they're going to continue to go up. So, I mean, it's our choice. The, I mean, the spousal coverage is, in my opinion, ridiculously expensive. I mean, my own personal health coverage, my spousal was probably $300, $200 less than that. So, I mean, the spousal coverage under this plan is extremely high. So, just want to pass that along.
And it?
I'm taking.
Dick?
I'll just listen to what Eric said, move on.
Phil?
What's the total cost to the city?
For the remainder of this fiscal year, it's a little over $6,000. On an annualized basis, it's approximately $26,000.
Currently?
Well...
Total?
Total. And I apologize, for the remainder of this year, it's $8,670, and for a fiscal year, it's $26,000. If we did the 15% increase, the cost to the city would be approximately $40,000 over a 12-month period of time.
And for the balance of this year, that's already worked in?
It's in the budget. Yes, sir.
Okay. That's all I, question I have.
Paul?
How long has it been since the city has shopped for coverage?
I am not aware of that, sir.
Because I'm seeing that these rates are pretty high. The cities, the cities' rates are pretty good, but the individuals' rates are pretty steep, and getting steeper.
Those rates are higher because the city doesn't contribute anything towards the dependent premium.
Yeah. I would sure like to see how this compares on the market myself, because I think this is, borders on unaffordable if it was, if I was working for the city. That's all I have.
Phyllis?
I admit, I know nothing about this. I need to look it up, but why wouldn't, why wouldn't we look for a better policy for the employees? Is there a reason we don't, we shouldn't, we can't?
I think we should.
So, you're saying, the total for the city, we have, how many employees, 50?
Approximately 42 full-time employees.
42, and at, you're saying, 586, so it's about, you're saying 26,000?
On an annual basis, the increase is about 26,000.
Do we have anybody on Medicare?
No, we do not.
I know.
This year?
But...
We have had some individuals in the past.
And so, what happens in that case? They get their own insurance.
They can do their own insurance. That is correct.
So, do we have the option to ask them to look?
I believe we do. I don't, I don't know what to tell you, but I know that insurance is high. I know what I pay, I mean, didn't you turn 65 this year? Some of us, I did, I'll admit it. I guess you don't ask a lady how old they are, right? Did I screw up again?
I'm past 65.
Okay. Well, you look 55.
I'm way past.
Yeah. But, I thought it was going to be a break going to...
Yeah, myself.
But it's not. But, I know what, I know insurance is high. I would, I know in our business that we always shop at every year, multiple places, because it sharpens it up. I would entertain doing that.
Mr. Mayor, Bob Fike is here, our third-party administrator for insurance is here, and I think he can ask you some...
Our agent.
Our agent, I'm sorry, agent of record.
Pardon being late. My wife didn't change the time in her vehicle, and I thought we had an extra hour that I didn't. The rate increase, original 15%, is ridiculous. But, the bad news is, we don't have, not only we, ourselves nor elected officials in Washington, DC have no clue to how to fix healthcare costs. If you paid attention to the news recently, you're seeing some major buyouts from Aetna and from CVS, actually. They're starting to buy things, buy prescription drug companies, and...
Round action.
It's going to affect them in a positive way. Right now, I have a 48-year-old, 49-year-old man, excellent health, retiring early from one municipality, because he's already worked there 27 years, single, $1,500 deductible, $600 a month, just for him. I opened, I went out in the market and looked, I couldn't get anybody to bid less than a $3,000 deductible for 800 a month. Now, here's a young guy thinking that he's going to have it made in retirement, you know, $600 out of his paycheck is going for insurance. People can't afford it. It's ridiculous. So, but what we've got here, being able to get it down to the 9.75 is not as bad as it could have been. And next year, I guarantee you, we're going to shop the market with whoever's in there. One of the things that the Texas Municipal League does, they put their rates out way in advance. So, ours doesn't renew till June the 1st. We got the rates in February, towards the end of February. And the reason they do that, insurance companies won't give you a bid that far out, because they don't know what your claims experience is going to be. And while I did ask Blue Cross, Aetna, Humana, all the others, they wouldn't give me any bid, because we're too far out. Somehow, I'm going to have to convince TML. They're telling us that we have to renew by a certain date.
What's the date of your renewal?
June 1.
June 1?
Yes.
One thing I noticed in here, okay, $1,000 deductible plans are just ridiculously expensive.
It's low.
Oh, it's ridiculously expensive, because, I mean, the majority of healthcare plans, and I have a bit of experience in this area, are, you know, $5,000 deductible on the high end and $2,500 deductible on the low end. The problem that we've got, and again, it's like a math equation for our staff, okay? I mean, ultimately, you make health insurance unaffordable for your group, okay? So, either they have to take out and go to the marketplace to get a plan. I know a woman who recently, she's a year short of Medicare, and she went out to the marketplace, and she's got a plan to cover her for $480 a month, okay? Which is almost 50% of our spousal coverage, right there, which is kind of full about pay for a plan. And the reason being is because we're at $1,000 deductible, $1,250 deductibles. But, if we push those, if we put, like, right now, you're raising your visit cost, 30%. I mean, right off the bat, 30% for a visit, okay? So, essentially, the folks who are sitting there in our pool, okay, and I'm not talking about, you know, administrative level, okay, I'm talking about, you know, hourly-type employees, who can, are we going to give them a 30% increase to, you know, offset the cost of their health insurance? I mean, you know, a 25% increase on a deductible side?
Many of your municipalities and school districts also are, and my niece works for Jetson ISD, and she's got a $5,000 deductible.
Right. Do we have, the question is, we're not privy to the plan particulars on this, so we don't know that, like, if they go to the doctor and they get treatment, is it credited towards their deductible? Not credited towards their deductible. Because that can make a big difference depending on downriver. So, or what would be covered? If they go in for something, is it totally 100% up to deductible? We don't know that. I mean, if I have a procedure done, is it, am I going to have to pay the first $1,250 before my insurance kicks in? Do I have an HSA option? Is there an HSA option for these folks?
No.
No HSA option. So, I mean, honestly, you've got a high, you've got a loaded deductible plan, which is ridiculously expensive.
With an HSA...
He's our agent.
With an HSA plan, it's feasible, but do you think your employees have money to kick in to a health savings account?
Well, combined with a higher deductible and a lower plan. Now, for an employee perspective, the city's paying it 100%, right? We're paying 100% for our employee?
Yes, 100%.
Okay, so we're paying 100% for our employee. So, a single employee who they're paying 100% may move to a higher deductible and put money into an HSA, because when he goes and does his visits or whatever, he can use money out of his HSA that doesn't come essentially out of his pocket, it's pre-tax, so he's not paying tax on that money, okay? So, it's actually cost savings to them at that point. And again, I'm fairly knowledgeable about, you know, working with these individual groups and plans, and what we're seeing here is, here's one plan, we got to go with.
No.
Okay, wait a minute. Let's hold on a second. What do you, is a consensus, do you people want to have us go up for more options, more bids from different companies?
I just have two questions, since I'm new. I don't understand your role, I'm sorry. And my second question is, does this include dental and vision?
Well, they're standalone, they're separate from the medical.
But, it's included in this price?
No.
No.
No, they're not. We, on the vision insurance, on the life insurance, on the long-term disability, we have a two-year rate guarantee, so that doesn't even come up until next year.
So, we pay this, plus long-term care, vision, dental, and what was the other one? Life?
Life insurance.
How much does that come up to? There's nothing that includes, there's a company that does all of that?
Do you have the...
TML-IEBP could do all of those for us if we chose to. However, with our agent, he's able to negotiate with Standard, get the same kind of dental plan at a lower rate than TML.
But I just, I don't understand, could you explain your role? Because you said that you talked to Blue Cross, Blue Shield, they said Castleville's too far out. Yet, when I got my Medicare and I had to get my own insurance, there was, I guess, 200 insurance companies that I could choose from, depending on my needs, and they were a lot lower than this. I don't, what do you do, actually? You go out and...
I check with all the companies that will go ahead and give you rates on small groups. We're in the small-group market in Texas. That's the 2 to 50. Then you're in a municipality. That puts you in a higher category, a risk category, than other businesses. The reason being is that you have employees that carry weapons, and they surcharge you as a result of that.
And we can't separate them? I'm serious. What's going on? A flat all of them?
Okay, so, our options are, we, you know, our options are, we either accept this, or do you want to go out to, for some other...
I personally make it, I would like to go out for bids.
Well, I have a question. I think you told us, if I remember, I heard you write, if we're going to renew, we need to do it now, because they're requiring us to do it now.
Yes.
We don't have the option to go out for bids. If we go out for bids, we lose this opportunity to keep this...
We have some pre-existing conditions.
I heard that, I understand, but I want to get a consensus of what you want to do.
Well, can we see his stuff?
Jim, I guess what I'm saying is, if we don't...
Right, he's saying that he couldn't get bids, because it's so far out from the other companies. He talked to other companies, but they would not give him a quote.
So...
So...
Far out?
At this point right now, we're probably stuck with this, unless you want to gamble. And I think if you gamble, this thing is going to go up even higher, and it's going to be unaffordable.
Yeah, the rates that TML are giving us, again, one thing that companies want to look at is the loss ratio, your claims versus your premium.
And our loss ratios are high?
We've got some pre-existing conditions that...
Okay. There you go, right there.
Okay, so, we've got guns, pre-existing conditions, and we're far away, so...
Okay.
Well, we've had worse in the past. We've had, in the past, five people on diabetes that were taken anywhere from four to six shots a day, and the insurance companies, at that point, they didn't want to touch us. That's why Blue Cross and Blue Shield gave us a 35% rate increase. That's when we went with the Texas Municipal League.
Can you get a wellness program going here?
So, you're saying that other insurance companies won't look at us, because our renewal date is June 1, but TML won't?
They'll look at you, but what they'll do is they'll adjust their rates accordingly.
Not for a June 1 renewal?
No.
You're not too far out at June 1. Now, if we go around to our next fiscal year, you would be pushing it out too far. But, for a June 1 renewal, you're within, what, two months?
Two days.
60 days or so? I mean, that's really, you know, backing you up against the wall as far as...
The state, the State Board of Insurance requires insurance companies to give you your renewal rates 60 days in advance.
Right.
Here, they give it to us 120 days in advance. And insurance companies don't like to give a bid that far out, because they don't know what your, your claims today might not be the same in 60 days from now. And if they buy it based on the claims today, and then you have some more extenuating circumstances, they'll be stuck with it, and the following year, they'll zap you.
Well, the thing is, though, we can look at, right now, you can take our claims history, dump it in, it's obviously already in the database. So, I mean, United is a standalone, Cigna is a standalone, that is a standalone, they can pull it up, they'll give you, you can have a rate back within two weeks.
United is underwritten.
Under TML, but they're in, this is, the quote that you've got with the United, all it is, is their network, okay? They're probably the underwriter for the TML, and you're using their network, right?
They are, it's a fully insured plan through United Healthcare.
Through their network.
Through their network.
What you can do, though, is, I mean, you can look at a United standalone outside of TML. TML could push United rates depending on their, you know, incidents, or rating history.
Well, the standard that has our dental, life insurance, LTD, they also underwrite the same products for the Texas Municipal League, and they won't give us a bid, because they would be bidding against themselves.
That, I find that extremely hard to believe. They will give you a bid, it may be higher than TML's, but they're going to give you a quote.
If they have you right now through the Texas Municipal League, why would they bid on it?
Because under the State Board of Insurance laws, if you ask them for a standalone, they have to bid it, but not exclude you.
Well, this is not a standalone. This is, this is a group policy.
Right, under a group. They have to bid it, they can't not bid it.
It's probably a pool of all governments, isn't it?
No, it's TML.
Insurance companies can refuse to bid on any group, be it medical, life, dental, whatever, they don't have to give you a bid, they don't have to give you one. They can, they can pass based on location... They can, they can pass based on location, they can pass, they can pass based on industry, SIC code, which is what type of business do you have, is it hazardous? There's many reasons that they can pass on bidding on a group.
But they could, they're already providing group coverage, so they can't discriminate against us.
They're providing group coverage through the Texas, through the Texas Municipal League that deals only with municipalities.
So how long before TML needs our answer?
Pardon?
How long before TML needs our answer? Do we have two weeks?
They need it now.
Yeah, they, as a matter of fact, they gave us an extension for today's meeting.
Why weren't we informed before?
We were looking at options.
You said you didn't look at options.
Yes, we looked at different options within the Texas Municipal League. They came up with a 15% rate increase, and then we said, okay, what can you do with changing some of the benefits, increasing the deductible, changing copays, whatever it may be? And they gave it to us, where we brought it down from 15 to 9.75, by changing some of those things.
We can't leave the city employees without insurance, and since we're up against the wall on this, I guess I'd like to make a motion that we approve this.
Mr. Carey has made a motion, seconded by Vic Ortiz. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Motion carries, three to one.
I would like in the future for us to get a little headroom on this, so that we don't get pushed up against...
Four to one. Motion carries, four to one.
We don't get pushed up against the wall on this again, so...
How do we do that, Mayor? Make sure that...
We'll make sure that we go out...
I think as we go into our new calendar year, we need to start looking at this stuff earlier, and I believe that right now, we should direct staff to start looking at different options next year, outside of what we've been doing for eight years.
I think we should, but when you start going to a $2,000, $3,000 deductible, you're going to see a lot of employees start shaking, because they don't, how many of them could get their hands on $3,000 right now if they had to for a deductible?
Well, the truth of the matter is, most of those...
Okay, let's, we've already, let's, I just, I want to, I want to make sure that it's clear to staff that we need to start looking at this earlier in the year, and not, not come to a council meeting and give us news like this and tell us we have to approve it right now. That is unacceptable.
We started...
I want staff to be clear that it is unacceptable to do business this way. Does everybody understand? We get it earlier in the year, so that we can at least do our due diligence and make sure that we're doing the best thing for... Now, maybe you guys have worked on it, but there has been zero communication with this council about it.
Right.
And that is unacceptable.
We did start in February, unfortunately, again, the communication with the other insurance companies was non-existent, because they didn't want to talk to us, it was too far out. So we're just going to have to tell Texas Municipal League next year, we need to go out for bids. The council wants us to go out for bids.
Absolutely.
So you better...
Can you understand what our point, sitting here and having this crammed down our throat in one evening, and we have had no options whatsoever?
No.
It's just, it's just an increase, and we're trying to watch out for the well-being of our employees.
Right.
And I don't feel comfortable that we have done that the best for our employees right now. It's nothing against you, sir, but we do not have enough information to look at, and we don't have enough options. We don't know if we've done the best job. But we, as Councilman Carey has stated, we can't leave our employees...
Without insurance.
...without insurance. So we're forced to do this. I do not like having, being in the position of being forced to accept a contract. I would, I would rather have options and know what they are.
Well, at the very minimum, we need to know what the plans are. I mean, I need to know, is there an HSA? Is there not an HSA? You know, what constitutes, you know, towards their deductible? This is an extremely low deductible place. We have no details about what this plan is about, and again, I'll echo what the mayor said, that's just totally unacceptable.
The current plan is the one you're talking about, not enough details, or...
I mean, I don't know what it covers and what it doesn't cover.
Exactly.
How much is it for an MRI? Is it covered under the deductible or not? You don't know.
Okay, I know. Let's, all right, let's move on. I can tell everybody's frustrated, I've given you ample time to voice your frustrations, but we can't change it, we voted. Thank you, I appreciate what you have done for us. And so we're going to move on to item number eight, discussion and appropriate action approving amendment number three to the professional services agreement with KSA engineers for the Eastside Lift Station project to provide additional design and survey services for the extension of a sanitary sewer long along FM 471 South, for an amount not to exceed $15,385. And you want to follow that? Everybody's in a foul mood now.
It's a council, remember, they approved $63,000, I don't know exactly what date, for looking at putting the sewer line down the highway on what I call the south side of FM 471. All right?
Towards the school.
Towards the school.
Got it.
What we found out, and what we found out, and within, 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 within...